The meeting is called to order.
Yes, Chief.
South Hampton Town Planning Board, Thursday, April 26, 2018. And that's the Secretary, I'll call the role. Member Burke.
Here.
Member long absent, member Zuccarelli.
Present.
Member LaFaro.
Present.
Secretary Keith, absent. Vice Chair Blaney.
Present.
The Chair is present. We have a quorum. Could you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no minutes to approve today. And we're going to go to, is that item 20?
Item number 20, Southampton Country Day Camp. So, Planning Board has received the final environmental impact statement for the Southampton Country Day Camp. On the desk is the draft and the FEIS is proposed. And the applicant has submitted that for the record. You have hired Cashin Associates to do the review to make sure everything is in there in terms of, in the case of the FEIS, it's all the comments from the public hearing in Britain and what was at the public hearing. And they have stated that the information is there, the responses are there. So you have all the information to deem it adequate and prepare a finding statement ultimately for the project.
So will this be made available to the public?
A hundred percent.
It's online?
I could see it now, of course, but it will go online. We have it electronically and I'll walk downstairs and I'll give it to, and it'll probably go online, probably by Monday at the latest, but hopefully tomorrow.
We have it already.
We have the FEIS.
And then you have it already, yes.
And these are the hard copies?
Those are the hard copies.
Do you have more of those?
We're going to have more because we're going to put it at the library. We'll have another copy. We'll have one. Town trustees, town clerk will have one.
But is the clock ticking?
Clock will tick as soon as you deem this adequate, we will put it on the website.
Are we going to have any presentation with Cashin today?
You will. When we come up to the finding statement, there'll be a draft circulated and they will come and present regarding the major issues and whether the documents submitted have mitigated those issues or not.
And staff has reviewed it, so you?
Yeah, I've started to review it. There is a draft that has gone back and forth so far with us.
So where to vote on whether or not it's all here? Is that?
All you're saying is...
Because I've only read part of it. It just, you know, came through a couple days ago.
All you're saying is, in the case of the FEIS, the DEIS has been complete and the information is there. In the case of the FEIS, it is all the public comments that are substantive, I think the word is substantive, and whether they have been responded to, those comments. And the information, I've looked at it, Cashin has looked at it, and we believe that information is there. And we're recommending to you to deem it adequate.
Are we taking any comment from the applicant today?
They can if they would like to speak.
No? There's no action on the board then?
There is. You are saying that you have, you find the document to be adequate for review and you will cause it to be posted and then distributed as required by the law.
I think we need more time. I mean, that's my own personal comment. I haven't finished reading it, so...
What's our time statute?
Yeah.
We have a time statute and it would be today.
Today.
Can we get an extension?
That's up to the applicant. Does the other board members feel the same way or do they find that there's...
My preference is to get it out to the public, to circulation.
Right.
A lot of people here, but if we don't take an action today, we can't release this document, is that correct?
We cannot formally release the documents, no. They would be here, they could review them, but they would not go on the website, they would not, because we don't put things that are not complete and adequate on the website. That would just muddy the waters.
I think it's important to have it out there as soon as possible to the public because tremendous amount of interest and...
I just can't say if it's adequate or not adequate because I've only read part of it.
Well, if you want to, do we have support to bring it forward?
I do.
Gloria, do you have any sentiment?
Well, I only read some of it myself. I was having some issues with parts of it just coming up blank on the file you sent me.
Oh, it still comes up blank?
Some of it did, yes. Some of the sections, specifically the noise section, which is one I'm...
That was missing from the electronic version?
It was just a bunch of pages, blank pages.
Mm-hmm. Oh, I'm sorry. You could have just emailed me.
Well, it's like I started looking at it yesterday.
Oh, I see. I gotcha. No, that's hard. Yeah.
But so how do we do this? We don't want to keep the information from the public.
No.
But the same point, I don't feel comfortable saying it addresses everything if in fact it doesn't, but staff has looked at it and they're saying it does.
I have, yes.
It's addressed the scoping document. I would defer to staff.
I would defer to staff too.
I would too.
Okay.
Knowing that some of us have not...
And we have an expert. I mean, we do have an expert that is traffic, noise, they are, they have the expertise on this and they're saying that that information is in their document. I mean, that's why you hired them to do that, so you rely on them.
Cashin did the whole kit and caboodle.
Cashin did that. I do the overview to make sure everything is captured.
So we would do this by resolution?
Yes, to deem the FEIS adequate and to disperse it as required by the law, including the website.
So today's Thursday and when does the public get it?
As I said, the electronic version, they would get it hopefully tomorrow, but the latest on Monday.
Through the website?
Through the website.
Okay.
But the hard copy?
Hard copies are here.
Would be down at the Planning Department.
Yeah, and the other hard copies will be dispersed to, as I said...
You have one set of hard, one hard copy?
I have two sets, but they will be getting me overnight. There were different sets that we need to do to send out, yes.
The applicant only provided two?
Because we didn't know if it was complete or not. I don't like people submitting 15 sets of documents unless you say that they are complete. And we have it electronically, so, you know, again electronically, as I sent it to you by email, but we have thumb drives too, so. If you wanted a copy of the thumb drive, you know, to copy onto your computer or something like that, we could do that.
Yeah, I was like, I went in and out three or four times to make sure that maybe, and it just brought up all these lovely blank pages.
Oh, right, yeah. I'm not quite sure how it happened.
Sometimes the appendices though, they're, were they numbered?
They were lettered.
I scrolled down and all I got was blank pages, so I don't, I didn't pay attention to whether they were numbered.
Yeah.
But they look like...
I've seen sometimes the appendices blank.
Can you just read the index so that we know a little bit about?
Oh, the FEIS.
Just read the, yeah, just read the indexes.
Okay, so it talks about an introduction, the format of the FEIS, what's required by law, revised site plan, which you discussed at a work session, so that's included in part of the FEIS and their response, comments and general support of the proposed action, and then responses of substantive comments. And they address water resources, ecological resources, transportation, land use and zoning, noise, alternatives, and then miscellaneous comments that weren't related to one of the other items I just cited.
And in the report, there were comments, there were noise reports?
Right, so 4.5, their original noise study is part of the DEIS, of course, but part of your comments was to have it attached as appendix and that has, that has been done.
Appendix D.
Appendix D. So, for instance, they, they talk about noise, that's the section, and then there's going to be a comment, noise comment number one, and then there's a response to that, noise comment number two, and then there's a response to that. So that's what happens in any FEIS, that's how it's going to be presented. So you can easily find your subjects of maybe, you know, the opposition said, oh, I addressed noise from a tennis court. Well, here's that comment and there's that section, so. And they attach every comment. If it's written, it's attached to this document, so you can refer to it. Okay, so.
That's pretty good follow-up. So our resolution then, just restate is to...
Yeah, is to deem the FEIS completes, adequate, I'm sorry, the wording is adequate.
Adequate.
And to cause it to be noticed properly for, to begin the review.
Public dissemination.
The review and the public, and the public...
Disseminate.
There's no public comment period per se for the FEIS. Public, there is a part of that SECRE that says, public can always comment on things, but there's nothing in terms formally, in terms of any public comments within FEIS. It's just part of SECRE.
Okay, so the public needs to know that, so there's no public hearing on the FEIS?
No.
But they can write comments?
If they would like to.
Okay.
And they can address letter, I mean, we're getting a tremendous amount of correspondence on this application.
And as I will say to anybody, you always read them. If you receive it, you read them.
Yeah.
So it's part of, you know, what you do with the board.
That's it.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Do we have motion to that effect?
Motion.
Motion by Zuccarelli?
Second.
Second by Gloria, and all in favor? Aye, opposed, abstentions? We have six yes and one absent.
Great, thank you so much. I'll leave it back to Mr....
Where did you want to, I don't know where we are.
Yeah, if you want to go, but you go which one?
I think we've got...
Yeah, that would be fun.
All these people came.
Anthony, where are you taking us?
Before we start, let me just tell you that numbers 16, regularly, which is DeMecchi, and 18, Roscoe Thomas, those are off the agenda.
16 and 18.
18 and what was the other one?
16.
16 and 18?
Yes, ma'am.
16 and 18.
We're going to do Kamakutu Go First, which is actually number one.
Oh, yeah.
Because we've got to do the SECRE determination.
Yeah, give him a, let's give him a...
Ladies and gentlemen, can you be quiet, please?
There's a war.
I don't have the strength.
I remember.
You do it. You break it.
So the first one I'm doing is numbers four and 22, Kamakutu Go. It's to deem it complete, but before we could deem it complete, scheduled the hearing, got to do the SECRE. So...
So that's number four?
Yeah, number four and 22, but I don't know if the maps and the aerials popped up on there. I was having issues attaching them.
I don't even see it listed here. It goes from three to five to six.
I have the aerial.
That's it?
I have the aerial, yeah.
I'll give out some maps when you guys get the scene.
Do you have any aerials, please?
So what the room should look like?
I have aerials too, if they're not popping up.
Yeah, this aerial.
Okay.
Yeah, the same.
All right. I have that for you.
Those poor people came for nothing. Those people came for nothing.
We were happy for their attendance and support.
Do you remember the property?
We do.
So up on North Sea Me Cox, then it comes up this nice private road subdivision. What we're doing today is really the SECRE. This came in in January, the application. I've been working with the applicant with some revisions to the map, which they've come in with, so we could do the SECRE. I just wanted to address with this planning board before we get to the SECRE, the, one of the things that we did with this application was they were going to do affordables off-site. They have to provide two. And when we actually discuss referral comments and report and everything, go through it, we'll get more details, but I presented this to Kyle. The applicant has proposed a site in North Sea and it's 17, I forget the address, but it's North, what was it?
17, what was it?
What was it? So it's a site with a unit in the back that has two apartments and a single-family residence in the front. And the applicant came with the two apartment units. Working with Kyle and me, discussed, they're actually going to do all three units on the property. The single-family in the front and the two apartments in the back, so we're going to get three affordable units here instead of two. Diane Weir is very happy about this because we need to mix them up. We need to get them where we could get them.
Right.
And actually, when you think about it, and I just thought about it, this is actually a density reduction then, because they're not building the additional density, they're utilizing what's there.
That's good.
So that's good.
It's an existing, it's existing property that they're going to fix.
Yeah, and utilize for the towns program. So probably also can you get it patched in? So what I did was...
Yes, the SECRE.
Part two.
Yeah, yeah. We'll have it in there.
Thank you. So, so in the first one is the impacts on land and I put yes and it would be small to moderate.
Just let me beg you, is it in an overlay district?
Oh, I'm sorry about that. It's actually CR-80 and I believe it is in the Aquifer Protection Overlay District, not Aquifer, agricultural. And that's what I think led it to be a type one action to do this. So it's CR-80, two acre zoning. The requirement is for 35% of land area to be preserved, which they meet, and 50% of the prime agricultural soils, which they meet.
They do?
Yeah, well, that's why the open space, actually, the open space is adjacent to the county land for the most part, with the exception of the northern part, but that's where all the prime ag soils lay, or in the south, really where the pasture is and the open land. And they do have the calculations that I verified. So in terms of impacts on land, I said yes, small to moderate, there would be some changes to the land. Most of the lots, though, are going to be along the road, which is really the most logical place for those lots, on the flattest part of the property, with the open space to the, with the adjacent open space to the county land next door. So although there'll be an impact, it would be small, not significant. Impact on geological features, no, because in this case, they're talking about cliffs, dunes, minerals, fossils, caves, rock outcrops.
I just want to ask a question. I remember at the public hearing, there was considerable conversation about, not that it's a swale, but there is water going into this man-made pond, this pond, that comes through the property. So did, how did you address that?
Well, it was addressed, if you remember. The thing is, the wetlands, and they just met Marty at site last week, two wetlands were upgraded off-site. There are no onsite wetlands. Those bodies of water are not wetlands, they're not regulated as wetlands, and there's no wetlands feeding into them. That's clear. Marty was very clear about that. Now, Marty wanted or recommended that one particular pond be restored to its natural sitting in the middle of the property. We didn't go with that recommendation. It was a very small area, but there are no onsite wetlands, just I want to be very clear about that. And Marty understands that. That's why he went back to the property and reflagged off-site, but there are no onsite wetlands, actually.
And what about the pond that straddles?
They're on the county property. And the one that straddles is a lined pond, actually. And so then the applicant agreed it will never be touched, that was Marty's recommendation. So he put that in the pre-op report, but it's not, it's not a regulated wetlands. It's a lined pond.
So, and who does it belong to?
That I don't know, actually.
Right.
It goes on both properties, yeah. But I will address it as if it's a SECRE issue, you know, for potential significant impacts, no, because it's not going to be touched, but I will find out ownership. I'm pretty sure...
Three quarters of it is on the county land.
Yeah, well, maybe when, when I'm done, maybe the applicant could address it, if I could just... So there was no on geological features. Impacts on surface water, I said no in this case because the surface waters, one, are not regulated wetlands, but all the development, for the most part, except for the one lot, is actually away from them. And with the regulated wetlands, they will have, if anything comes onsite, they'll be imposed with the required setbacks and buffers, so. And that actually probably would only affect the one or two lots on that side of the property, but other than that, the ones on the other side, the overwhelming majority of the lots have no impacts on the wetlands because they're so far away. In fact, they're outside of the jurisdiction.
And when will the wetlands flagged?
Marty was just out there last week.
So recently?
Oh, recently, yeah. So then on page three, impacts on groundwater, there was no, obviously it's got to conform to the requirements of the Health Department. Again, impacts on flooding, same thing, same thing with impacts on air. Impacts on pants and animals, no. Again, we've got 35% open space, 50%, and it connects to the county land, so it creates a corridor. Impact on agricultural resources, I said yes, small to moderate, but again, we're preserving 50% of the prime ag soils, so we've addressed the requirement in the code. Impact on aesthetic resources, I said yes in this case. Again, small, just so we know, we've looked at it. It is a beautiful property, it's great to look into, but it's sitting up on a private road with no public access to it. It just, it's, it's not a public piece of property, so that's, that's just the reality of it. Impact on historic and archaeological resources, I said no. There are no, it's not an archaeological sensitive area and the applicant has agreed to a facade easement that will work out during the process, the specific language of the house, even though the house you actually can't see from the road, but they did agree to that.
Did anyone agree to a facade easement? I don't know.
Which House does?
Well, it was, there was something in the pre-op report about address, maybe it was a covenant to address maintaining a historical...
Which House?
The house on the property, actually. There's an existing residence.
Which property? We talked about that, but that's beyond the...
Do you have the pre-op?
How would you bring it? But there was something in there about the historic structure, if you, you know, the applicant wants to, you know. I've said, by the way, in the pre-op report, I acknowledged...
Matt, okay.
Okay, he'll get it. That the historic structure was not visible from the road, it's not a designated historic structure. Landmarks didn't come up with anything to recommend preserving it specifically other than, you know, if you can, but that'll, that'll be up to the board.
Is that the house on Lot 9?
Yes.
That we're talking about right now?
So we could come back to that. Impact on transportation, no, just with the understanding that the road will never be dedicated to the town in order to preserve. They have some really excellent trees along that road, so we want to maintain it as a private and it will never be dedicated to the town. No impact on energy resources, no impact on noise, odor and light, or human health, consistent with the community plans, to the extent that it meets the zoning requirements and the open space requirements of the town code. Again, consistency with the community character. It's a residential neighborhood with some other residential development and some open land, which this property preserves some of it. So with that, I was going to recommend the negative declaration.
The facade easement is certainly, I think it's beyond the reach of our...
He's getting the pre-op report.
Yeah, and there's something in there to that effect and I don't think I made a very, you know, compelling case for it. I just sort of, look, it's a nice old house, if it's possible to maintain some of the architectural style of it, that's great. The other side of it is, and I've, and I've said this and I'm on the record, saying, this structure can't be seen by anybody from anywhere. I mean, it just, it can't. I've been to the property, there's, you can't see the house from there. So, you know, I'm not married to the idea, does it, you know, I'm, I'm more happy with the three affordable units that we're getting in North Sea, quite frankly, than worrying about the house that was built in the 40s.
Oh, in the 40s, yeah. So we have to resolve the pond that...
Well, just the ownership, sure. Maybe, maybe they've...
Talking about the pond.
This one?
This man made it?
Yeah.
Well, I think that the applicant owns that and the county owns that. This is something that goes down the middle. Well, I don't know, you suggest to me how else it could be owned?
Well, you know it has to be clarified in some way because if that lot, number 11, gets sold and an owner comes in and says, oh, you know, this county pond is on my property...
Well, let's put it this way, we could covenant, you know, we've already agreed that there's going to be no removal of the lined pond or anything like that.
Covenant to that.
Something, some clarification.
Except that, you know, it's a, it's a basic rule in real estate. I can't put a covenant on that. The county would have to do something.
Yeah, but that's true.
Covenant to that part. That's why I say we own...
That's okay. Covenant your half.
That's fine.
They could address that.
And I'm guessing the facade easement, that there's no consideration for offset of a park fee to the facade easement?
No, not really.
Satisfy recreation?
It doesn't.
No.
I've, I've looked into that and the angle. The only thing you get out of doing something like that is some additional ability for an accessory apartment. I think they changed the rules that you get a second, you know, if you do something with these structures, but other than that, I don't think so. And like I said, I wasn't, it wasn't a compelling argument in my case. I put it in there because it was something that we discussed, but like I said, it's, it's not the most important, you know. The key was getting the 50% of the preserved ag land and most of the open pasture is preserved, making sure that there were no setback issues from the wetlands, making sure we comply with the affordable housing. These were the issues.
Give it...
And, well, let me just take a look. It says a facade easement is an option that would preserve the exterior of the structure while allowing the owner to alter or renovate the end. So it's just a recommendation. So it's not, like I said, it wasn't...
Okay.
So with that, I would recommend a neg deck.
Okay, very good. Do we have motion?
Motion.
Motion by Zuccarelli?
Second.
Second by Blaney, all in favor? Aye, opposed, abstentions? We have six yes, one absent.
And then...
We have a nexus to deem it...
Deem it complete and schedule the hearing for May 24.
That's item 22.
I heard, or 4th?
That's number four on the agenda. May 24?
We're not doing public hearings on that June, we're just hoping...
Right, yeah, no, that's why I'm going to work that meeting.
So we might have to go a little heavier on the other ones.
So what's the date?
So our motion then is to deem complete and schedule hearing for May 24.
May 24.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Doug Jackie and the second by Zuccarelli, all in favor? Aye, opposed, abstentions? Six yes. Thank you, Mr. Carter Martin.
And you'll take it. You'll take your vote.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Oh, yeah, because, that's what we do, we identify when we need to report. Number nine. This is just the extension to the Lewis Road PRD.
Oh, okay.
And I did get something in writing from Wayne Bruin's office, so to extend the adoption of the pre-op report from April 25 to May 24.
Very good.
Get the understanding, we'll start our review on that.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Jackie?
Second.
Second by Robin, all in favor? Aye, opposed, abstentions? Six yes.
Number 12. This is one of Jackie's. This was a site plan application for, I believe it's a hay farm, if you remember, with some ag labor housing. Does the board remember this one?
Yes.
The clue?
Yes.
Yes. That's a very long piece.
Very, that's right, a very long piece.
That's right.
Actually, they're just looking, they, I've been working with them, this is their first extension, so they just want to do an extension for submission of the map until July 24, 2018.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Blaney?
Second.
Second by Gloria, and all in favor? Aye, opposed, abstentions? Six yes. And are we going to set the bond for Mill Creek Heights?
Mill Creek Heights.
Item 14?
Yep. You guys remember Mill Creek Heights?
We do.
Also Jackie's.
Right off of Neuk Road.
Right off of Neuk Road. So I don't know if it popped up in your resolution because there have been some revisions, but the bond amount that came in from the town engineer and the highway department is an amount of $362,725 and the review fee is $27,658. So I'm recommending that the board set the bond at $362,725 for the improvement with an obligation date set at 24 months beyond the date that the town board accepts this agreement and then with an expiration of six months beyond the obligation date.
Okay, very good. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Jackie, second by Zuccarelli, all in favor? Aye, opposed, abstentions? We have six yes.
Number 15, that's the Mercedes-Benz property, but Dennis, you weren't here last time. So we deemed their site, they got their variance, we deemed the site plan complete, but we waived the hearing for 30 days because we had a free submission at the zoning board, but they just wanted to get approval to do a change of the color. They have a blue color on the building, but the sign was changed to black some time ago, so they were changing it to black. The board looked at it and was agreeable. I actually like the black better than the blue. So this approval is just a limited approval to allow the, the blue scheme to be changed to black.
Do we call those things anything other than just saying coloring on the building?
I have it in here, hold on, let me just see.
There's got to be a word, right?
Well, yeah.
Be more clear.
Yeah, that's all I say there. I could, because it's really just the...
It's the trim of the building.
The trim, but there's, it's also the, there's, you know... The trim, but it's also the, there's, you know...
Extensions and...
Yeah. I could...
Architectural detail, but just sort of a...
I'll put something in there, the architectural features of the building.
Right.
Yep, I'll fix that. But with that, I recommended that they approve that with no vested rights for any of the other improvements at this point until they finish the process.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Zuccarelli, second by Gloria, and all in favor. Aye, opposed, abstentions, six yes. Site disturbance?
No, that one's...
Oh, item sixteen is off?
Sixteen and eighteen.
Okay.
And we did twenty-two?
Yep.
Twenty-two you guys this evening.
All right. Thank you, Anthony.
I'm done.
Thank you, Anthony.
Good. Matt, before you get started, I have these.
You're welcome.
Slightly out of order, just one, and then we'll go back.
Okay, great.
We're going to start with number seven.
Number seven?
George Eckert.
George Eckert?
Yes. This is a subdivision that I'm handling in Jackie's absence. It's a standard plan of three lots on three acres, one hundred and thirty thousand square feet, more or less, situated in the R twenty zoning district located at one fifty-three Old Country Road. They are requesting an extension, it would be their thirteenth extension since receiving approval. I do have the applicant's representative here, so he can give you guys a little bit of an update.
Yes.
Before we take action.
Objection, his absence.
Yeah, it's good.
For the applicant, James N. Hume, three-two-three, Mill Road, West Hampton Beach. Good afternoon. Thirteen is a lucky number. I live at thirteen Brushy Neck, I lived at thirteen Debbie Lane. My wife was born on the thirteenth of August, so I like that number.
All right.
I've been trying to ascertain for some time for my client as to whether he wants to continue this or not, and I have not been able to get a definitive answer from him. I'm at the point now where I think I'm going to have to go knock on his door and speak to him in person about that. So if you could entertain one more adjournment of this, I will endeavor to either finish it or remove it, so that doesn't sit around any longer.
So will you come in ninety days? Do you need ninety days?
Ninety days.
Well, if he wakes up and says, which I really think he should, that I need to do this, then I'm probably going to need the ninety days to finish the things that we do. But if he tells me, no, I'm done, I don't, you know, there are some conditions from the Health Department that he's not overly happy about, that he wants to abandon it, I will tell you that long before the ninety days. But as I said, if we're going to continue, we'll probably need it.
If he wants to withdraw, we should get a formal letter, and we'll do it by resolution.
Okay.
It's cleaner, you know?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, Jim, not a problem.
Thank you very much.
Do we have a motion by Zuccarelli?
Second.
Second by Blaney on the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, six yes.
Thank you.
And Robert King?
We are taking you to number one.
Oh.
Rich Road.
Oh.
Six Ridge Road.
Depends on the Health Department. Fifty-six Ridge, is on for completeness?
On for completeness.
Thanks, Matt. Number one.
It's a lot.
Jumped out of order. I remember this.
That's such a figured lot.
Yes.
Wow.
This was received back on February eighth, consecutive action on two parcels located within the R forty zoning district, within the New York State Archaeological Sensitive Area, fifty-six and ninety-five Sugarloaf Road. It's a lot line modification which proposes to transfer about twelve thousand square feet from Lot Two to Lot One. You know, the owner of Lot One had encroached into an area of Lot Two, maintained it as lawn, that portion of Lot, Lot Two is, there's a Conic Land Trust easement over it, so they are going to adjust that line, and then the owner's agreeing to give a portion of their lot as an easement as well to the land trust. The issue, we previously deemed this incomplete back on March twenty-second, because we didn't have any consent from the land trust. We have sent to receive that consent, so just to deem it complete and set a hearing on March twenty-fourth.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Jackie?
Second.
Second by Zuccarelli, all in favor. Aye, opposed, abstentions. We have six yes.
Second to number two.
Two is Jose Nguyen?
Jose Nguyen.
Received on April eleventh, this was actually brought by Jackie, I believe, in November's work session. The applicant is proposing to transfer a portion of their property to the town in order to gain some relief from clearing restrictions. I believe the board found that agreeable at the time. However, the applicant has not approached the town yet, so we're looking to deem this application incomplete until they do so.
Incomplete?
Yes.
So he's proposing a two-lot subdivision this time?
That's a, it's a lot line modification. I have the map, I can show you.
We have it in the past, we have it.
You have it?
So it's a very long, thin...
It's that long skinny piece to bring them under the threshold, which will get them to a lower clearing restriction.
So I'm looking at the two, are there existing?
Two existing lots.
Two existing lots, and they want to transfer some of it to the town?
Correct. It's town open space.
Where is the town open space?
Directly behind it.
Behind it?
So, the two pieces, the little one with the house, everything else is going to the town?
Just hold it up, Matt.
This piece here is looking to shave off this back piece and give it to the long town parcel on the back.
Oh, that's the town parcel?
Yeah, this whole long one, and it comes out on the flack.
Oh, the town owns actually a lot? Is it open space?
There's a lot of hiking trails in that area.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Big.
There's two trails that go through the property.
Yeah, okay, great.
We're just going to deem it incomplete until...
Okay. Okay, very good. Do we have a motion to deem it incomplete?
Motion.
Motion by Robin?
Second.
Second by Gloria, and all in favor. Aye, opposed, abstentions, six yes.
Number eleven is the Argo Corporation. Familiar with this? This is the agricultural reserve with a portion that where they're proposing to construct a house and other accessory structures. We're looking to move the action deadline forward to May twenty-fourth. The action deadline is May ninth now, and at the May tenth meeting, I'll have a draft staff report for you guys so we can discuss it, and then, like I said, the action.
Matt, could we make a referral to the ag advisory committee on this?
I don't see why not. Right? To refer it to ag advisory?
Just to...
Did you do a referral to it?
Yeah, I believe so.
Oh, did you?
I don't know if it went or not, it's, I'm not sure.
We can rescind it.
Yeah.
If Marty's more specific.
Just to make a determination that the property is currently under agricultural use, and just to get their feedback is to, you know, it's important for the record, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's been a lot of comments.
Yeah, a lot of...
Yes, yeah.
Okay. We'll get to that.
Okay, very good. So our action is to extend the deadline?
Yeah, move the action deadline to May twenty-fourth.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Jackie?
Second.
Second by Robin, all in favor. Aye, opposed, abstentions. We have six yes and one absent.
But you'll have a report on the tenth?
On the tenth, the draft report, yeah.
Are you doing site disturbance, crossing at Quogue?
Yep, number seventeen. This was received on February twentieth. It's Lot Nine of the subdivision map of Crossing at Quogue. It's at Three Rosebud Lane. It's about an eighty-four thousand square foot property within the CR eighty zoning district and the Aquifer Protection Overlay District. At the last meeting at the, the April twelfth meeting, sorry, you guys approved a covenant amendment to bring them to thirty-five percent, which is what the Aquifer Protection Overlay District allows. They have since filed that, and they have submitted a revegetation plan, which I can show you, and they did not get the opportunity to upload it.
So the planning department is now approving these re-veg plans?
Correct.
Do you get any input from Marty or not?
No. We, because we have lists of the plantings that are necessary, so we go through it. And actually, Matt's an expert now.
All right.
Identify most of the plants.
He's a revege person.
No, and so we get a list, we know what the different areas are, pitch fine, the other ones.
So you can get a better idea of all of the property.
And he can give a list to the applicant, he knows what the plan looks like, the spacing and everything like that, and it freed up Marty's department to continue the wetlands. They're pretty overworked there, so.
Yeah.
But hard ones, we would definitely take to him, but most of these are pretty standard. We definitely know what the plants are for the areas.
And so is it bonded? These are bonded? The revege plans are not bonded?
No, no, we don't bond on residential property.
Don't do that.
Really hard to deceive.
So then you go and check it out.
Correct. Yep. So we're just looking to approve this with the normal conditions that everything's planted and installed, I inspect, and then they submit updated surveys to show that they comply.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
Just for process, so I just understand process. The applicant will go to a nursery, get the plans that the nursery decides brings it to you.
We have a list that, so after I do, I'll do an initial inspection, see what's pertinent to the area. We can do that with GIS also. It kind of tells us different areas of the town, different natural communities, what grows there. Spent a lot of time building these lists and adding to them, and then based on that, I can, it's basically a checklist, I check off if these are what's appropriate. They'll go to a nursery, show me this invoice or something like that, and I'll go out and inspect and verify what's there.
Excellent, thank you.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria.
Second.
Second by Blaney, all in favor. Aye, opposed, abstentions. We have six yes. We have the estate of James Mears.
Yes. We are familiar, we know this as a different name, as Gina Webster, the lot line modification. We just have it as a ZBA referral at this time, and I was going to, we, there was a pre-appreciation report that was already adopted in August, we're just going to send that as the ZBA referral report, which I've attached for you.
So we still have to adopt that as our report?
Yes, we still have to adopt it as a report, yeah.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
I haven't even looked at it.
Absolutely.
You adopted it. You haven't looked at it? Don't say that on the record.
Right, not in a long time.
Oh, okay.
It's over, I wasn't even here, actually. It's August twenty-fourth.
August twenty-fourth.
Oh.
So there's two lots.
Just quickly explain it.
There's two small lots. One was conforming, and it's becoming slightly non-conforming, and then the smaller of the two lots are becoming more conforming, but will still be non-conforming.
Nineteen.
So it's a lot line modification?
Lot line modification. Yeah, that's all I need. Should be a survey attached to, I can show you paper if you need it.
Now, the survey's here.
It's in West Hampton.
How come only part of the survey is on here?
Is it cut off? I can show you a paper one. It might just be cut off on your copy. It's the existing line, and it's going to shift this way.
Yeah, so this is what we had before.
It's here, now they're showing the relative portion.
Yeah, the whole thing's here, you just got to, it's right here. I don't know why it's cut off.
I'm learning new things all the time.
Yeah, we only got half of it.
It's the existing line here?
Yeah.
It's going to shift down here.
Okay, good.
It's there.
Yeah.
Just need a motion to adopt the pre-app report as the ZBA report.
Will you relabel it? I mean, we don't normally just send the whole pre-app report. I mean, you'll label this as ZBA.
From what I was told, that's, we, we just...
We just attach the resolution which says this is...
This is, will serve as, yeah, we attach a resolution which states the pre-app report will serve as a ZBA report.
Motion. Motion by Zuccarelli?
Second.
Second by Blaney, all in favor. Aye, opposed, abstentions.
And then I just have the acknowledgement that two forty-one Dune Road was signed by...
Two forty-one was signed? I signed it, that's acknowledged for the record?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
There, did you have any applicants?
I do. I'm going to go to my applicants, which actually goes in order, which is, my first one is number three, which is John Maloney. This is the property in Hamptons, which is adjacent to the, lies on Hatch Shop. Do you know where that is?
Oh, sure.
Yes. So...
I had my hat there for you, so.
Did you? Very nice. So, part of the land is being transferred to Maloney, which is this rear portion, portion is going to Maloney in the back.
Well, is it to the town?
The town. So this is the town and John Maloney together. The, the contract has been signed and this, we need to have the transfer happen to facilitate it, so.
What, is, is it a house back there?
No, that, the land, the house is gone. That's actually gone. So this is an alter, right? It just needs to be updated and, you know, I've confirmed that that house is gone.
And it's not adjacent to the town park or anything?
No.
So do they have to make it such an odd configuration of?
Oh, that was the, this is existing. This is proposed, which is the proposal here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's more regular and shit.
Yeah.
So, but we just need a public hearing and process it. Um, so I'm recommending completeness and scheduled public hearing for May 24th.
Very good.
I'm going to just, wait a minute, I keep hearing May 24th.
This is the sixth item.
Don't forget, we're not meeting in June 14th because of the US Open.
Oh.
No meet, meet, no meeting on the 14th?
It is afternoon, but there's no evening. There's no hearing.
So that's my recommendation. The incomplete scheduled public hearing on, uh, May 24th.
Motion by Jackie.
Second.
Second by Robin. All in favor? I oppose abstentions. Six yes, one absent.
And then my next one is Sag Harbor impound yard.
Impound?
Impounds.
So I can just ask a question about this? Is it, if it's Sag Harbor Village?
Owns the property?
That's where you come get it.
Village owns the property.
They impound your boat? Oh, if you have.
Oh, come on up.
Yeah, we, we don't have a map, do you?
Uh, I do, and I'm going to give it to you. The, uh, this is an application for site plan for the impound yard, which would be the paved area, maybe some curbing and fencing, a fencing around the property.
Good afternoon, Liz Vail, Fallford's 50 Station Road Watermill. Hi, everyone.
Hello.
So this is a piece of property. It's 24 acres on Bridgehampton Sag Harbor Turnpike. It's owned by Sag Harbor Village. It leases a, a large portion to the town for the transfer station that's there. This is an old dump site.
Uh-huh.
It was a dump from, it pre-existed zoning.
I planted there, I'm not sure.
And we're proposing the impound yard, which has been requested by the Village of Sag Harbor Police Department in an already cleared area, um, right next to, almost, well, it's as close, it's close to Bridgehampton Sag Harbor Turnpike. And it's also near an existing metal shed that's on the property. So you can see where it is.
So impound, so they're going to bring cars that have been impounded?
Correct. Right now, the village has, doesn't have a lot of space and they're using their highway department yard for keeping the impounded cars there. And it's getting very busy. They have heavy equipment stored there. And then they recently had to hire, um, I believe, extra EMT personnel. And they have to keep EMT cars in the same highway yard as well. So now, as a result of that, they've asked for the creation of this impound yard to, to keep these cars. They have a responsibility to keep the cars once they're impounded. They have to store them in a safe place, so.
So is it?
In a secure place as well, which is why we need the fence.
A building, a shed?
The shed's existing. That's on the site. It's been there forever. It's a metal shed.
Cars into that?
No, the shed is a small shed. It's existing. It's on the site, right near the proposed impound yard area. We're just asking for a paved area, which we have. It's 60 by 80, and it would have 20 parking spaces and a fence around it.
And what is it that now?
It's not paved right now, no.
So it's going to be paved?
Correct. It would have to be paved because it's going to store vehicles there.
So is this an, have any environmental issues here with this location?
Well, it's already a disturbed site, um, this particular area. It was a dump. It was also, I believe, a superfund site, um, which was remediated through the DEC. The DEC has several testing wells on site right now that they, they inspect regularly. And actually, um, they've, uh, we've vetted this with the DEC and preliminarily at least, they've signed off on it, so. I mean, certainly something you would consider through your review.
How many vehicles would it be?
Twenty.
After this, whether it's 20 now?
After. There's no, there's no vehicles proposed right now. We would need the impound yard to, to store a car that's taken from the police during a traffic stop or a DIW. You would need to take the car to a safe location and securely, you know, place the car somewhere. This is what we're seeking to do.
I see they have blah blah going around the whole.
Correct. I, I can find out if that's an actual requirement of the law. Obviously, it's for security purposes.
Will they have enough lighting to make sure no vandalism gets in?
Well, I think the lighting, yes, we're going to propose lighting, but I believe it would have to be somehow dark sky compliant in order to put it there. So we're going to have to work with you on that.
What about screening?
Screening, there's no screening. This is a site that, um, we don't believe this would be too visible from the road. It's already disturbed. It's a dump site. We're not proposing screening.
How close is?
It's also surrounded by vacant properties.
Is it close to any of the trails from the greenbelt?
Um, no, I don't believe it's too close to the existing trails. I believe they're at least 200 feet off, but I could check. We can find that out.
Uh, well, we've, we've had some.
I have, you've had what?
We've had some public interest in the, in the project.
I know you have. We, we met with Ms. Dayton today. Yes, I, I understand that you've had public interest.
There's been requests to have public hearing.
Yes, that's fine. We're fine with a public hearing.
So these are cars that have gas in the gas tanks and oil in the cars and?
They were driving and they're taken off the road.
Right.
Right.
No, but I mean, I, I look at it from.
You're looking at it.
The environmental issue.
Yes, I understand.
But it's not a junkyard. It's not like where they.
No. No.
I think that's a concern.
These cars are hopefully going to be stored there temporarily while the person is being processed and hopefully taken back by that person. To the extent they're not, they do these auctions and get rid of them that way.
They're not going to do it here, though, right?
No, there would not be an auction. We're not proposing to have auctions.
Oh, they ship them up island.
Yeah, so the, the Sag Harbor Village is renting this space?
No, no, Sag Harbor Village owns this property.
They own it.
It's 24 acres and we're leasing part of it to the town of Southampton for a very nominal amount for the transfer station that's been there for, since 1989. So the transfer station is established in 1989 after they closed all the dumps and they started to remediate.
Yeah, yeah. So when you drive into the transfer station?
Correct.
What's the location?
Let me show you that because it's not really clear from the plan.
No, you can't tell?
Yeah.
It's sort of floating in space.
Right.
This is the only one I have, and I have to get a, a, a larger one made for you, an aerial of the. Is the aerial in your packet?
No, nothing.
Because it's, no.
Nothing is.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's hard to see, Jackie, but you can see this is the transfer station.
Yeah.
There's a little shed right there and an entrance, and then this is the proposed impound yard, that little square.
This is the same.
See? If you could pass it out, I'm going to make it bigger for you. I'm sorry, but I will, I will make it bigger. That's all I have right now, but.
And the use could be expanded?
No, I'm sorry?
Use could be expanded?
It's a municipal use property. I mean, I don't know what you mean. We're only asking for 20 cars. I don't, we don't anticipate needing more than that. You know, Sag Harbor Village, like every municipality out here.
Well, which zoning?
Very popular and crowded.
The village zoning or the town zoning?
This is the town zoning. The town zoning. Right. But this is a municipal use, which is permitted in the residential zoning district within which it lies.
Why do they even need to come test for this?
Well, technically, it's not necessarily that they do. Sometimes municipalities would come to you. If we came to you with the allegation that we weren't subject to your zoning, we would be asking you to make a Monroe decision, which is a nine-part test under the Monroe case, where you would waste nine different factors and determine whether you're, we're subject to your zoning. But I think, um, in this instance, the village really wants to work with the town. We almost shared this site, so we're here before you, asking for permission to do this. However, we, you know, it's very likely, because this is a police purpose for health, safety, welfare of the village, that we would satisfy the Monroe test, in my opinion. But I'm not here asking you that today. I'm just asking you to proceed with the application.
So does anybody from the town side say anything about this or have any?
Well, that's the village property. So, um, there, um, so far Christine Fenton, who does waste management, is very well aware of this application. And, uh, as the town engineer, she reviewed this application and felt the information was there to process the application for the site, for the site plan.
It's pretty nominal when you look at the overall site and what it's been used for in the past. I know that Ms. Dayton asked for it to be preserved. It's, it's not, we're not proposing to preserve this property. So. At this point in time.
I think the public hearing is the next step.
Absolutely.
We'll go to that.
Yeah, we'll do that completes and schedule a public hearing for May 24th.
May 24th. That's the day.
That's the day.
It's a very heavy night.
I, I thought I'd get a free pass last week and then I find out it's like.
We got nothing.
Nothing. Do we have a motion? Motion by Gloria.
Second.
Second by Robin. All in favor? I oppose abstentions. We have six yes, one absent. Thanks, Liz.
And then my next one is Citirelli.
Citirelli, item six.
Uh, this is an application that's been before the ZBA. This is to convert an existing building, which was the newspaper.
Oh, that's.
Life in West Hampton to, um, a, uh. No, 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 I got, I got it. Sorry, I'm like switching gears from, no, uh, for three office uses in the front building and four special trade contractor uses in the back building. You gave a ZBA referral. Initially, they were asking for like 11 uses. You said the uses were a little out of control. So they brought it down and the ZBA made a bunch of findings, including environmental review, which is included, um, and a bunch of, uh, conditions which would control the uses on the property, which will incorporate into our, uh, to your approval. But, uh, they've got all the basic information. I have a landscape plan for the project. They're redoing the front elevations, which I have, um, some, some iterations on it. I'm not quite sure if it made it into the.
No, nothing is here. Nothing is.
But, uh, so we're redoing the existing building and bringing it all up to date with lots of landscaping.
No, nothing else.
Yeah, but, uh, the remediation happens and, you know.
But the ZBA, uh, report limited the number of uses, is there?
Oh, yes, definitely. Up to three office uses. So they could do one big office or up to three office uses and then, uh, up to four special trade contractor uses.
Up to four, was that it?
Yeah. Yes, but, uh, they were very strict. They, the no outdoor storage, no storage of trucks outside after, you know, hours. So, um, that's a trophy because this is in our 20 zoning district.
Is it internal parking?
40 zoning district.
And these?
Uh, yes. There would be, they could park, of course, inside the overhead doors if they wanted to.
But no outdoor parking?
Yes. So that's part of the ZBA decision in that case.
And so we attach that to this, right?
Yeah, we would attach that to, uh, any decision you make from the application.
And that would be all the conditions, right?
Yeah, and I think I'm suggesting a covenant, because otherwise you're not going to know when you look at the CO, that you can't use it for typical special trade contractor uses, so. So, but the applicant's here, if she wants to speak to it. I'm actually, um, suggesting we do not have a public hearing on this to save you from one more application.
On the 24th?
Um, there was no public, there was no public comments with the ZBA application, just so you know. And the applicant has an aspect.
That's what I'm here to request, is that you would consider please waiving the public hearing based on the fact that there was no public interest at the ZBA and they, they had the hearing and then they adjourned it several times. So, um, it's, it's up to the board, but that's my request. Thank you.
Seems like, given our agenda, heavy agenda.
Given your agenda.
Like a reasonable request?
Right, so we'll provide a 30-day written comment period.
Okay, do I have a motion? Motion. Motion by Zuccarelli, second by Blaney. All in favor? I oppose abstentions. Six yes. And.
It'll go in order.
Can I just say that the, what's submitted here has a ton of offices? So this is not correct, right?
It's only three offices, so I'm going to verify.
You've seen that?
I, I have seen that and I'm, I mean, you could have multiple offices, but one business that would have many offices in it. So they're going to have. Their C, their CO is going to say three businesses or two businesses.
Three tenants, right. Three tenants.
Correct. Businesses, tenants, yep. Exactly. If going in order, King would be the next one, which is number eight, which is a three-month extension for the submission of plans.
Very good. Do we have a motion? Motion by Zuccarelli.
Second.
Second by Gloria. All in favor? I oppose abstentions. Six yes. Now we can go to Palaco.
Yes, which is a three-month extension for submission of plans. They're very close. They're just, uh, keep their final documents submitted.
Okay, very good. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Jackie.
Second.
Second by Robin. All in favor? I oppose abstentions. Six yes, one absent.
My next one is Pine Hollow, which is 13. So this is the last remaining unit of that 10 units on Gardner's Lane. Do you remember this? Very back when. They came in two years ago, asked for an extension, um, for personal reasons. He's asking for two more years on this.
Can you bring us up to date because there are new people on the board?
Sure. So, uh, back in the mid 2000s, planning board vetted an application to do a condo conversion for a motel, demolishing the hotel and turning into four, uh, 10 condo units. Based on the code, it met the code requirements. There was one outs, there was, um, three buildings of three units and then the one outstanding unit, which got moved several times, but finally has been placed on the property. And they have just decided not to build that remaining unit, so we're continuing that project. Everything else is CO'd on the property. Everything else is in order. They just have not constructed that last remaining units. But it's all part of the offering plan. It's all part of everything that you vetted through your process. So, um, but he's had some personal issues for the last couple of years and he's, again, is asking for an extension at this time. Okay?
Very good. Do we have a motion by Zuccarelli?
Second.
Second by Gloria. All in favor? I oppose abstentions. Six yes, one absent. Bring us to Roscoe, item 21.
Yeah. So this is the one, I know you have two Roskes on the application. This is the one that is located. Um, and backs up to Summer Avenue in some, with the residential uses, Southampton Meadows. And you issued a priest, uh, a ZBA report. The application, these buildings exist and a small building exists here, about 800 square feet, and they would demolish that and construct a new building, um, looks like a prefab building. And its location, at the time of your report, you requested lead agency. And they relocated it to you in April. And now you would consider, um, whether it would have any significant impacts on the, the environments. The first three, if you look, I'm pretty sure that is in there, right? Or maybe it isn't.
No, it's not. Shoot. The map is there.
The map is there?
But.
I meant to copy this for you, I'm sorry. Could you wait a minute? No, I'm just going to run the copies off for you.
Sure.
Sorry about that. Can you do it? Yeah. Uh, I have the applicant's P, uh, part one and two. They're short form. But basically, I, you know, I'm citing that it doesn't conform to the code. It's, uh, more industrial uses in the R20 zoning district. This zone was supposed to go over to HO at some time and it hasn't yet, obviously. And they want to put in another expansion of, uh, this building, which would go from 20% coverage, which is what the ZBA decided several years ago, and then expand it again to 23% coverage, which would be over and above what R20 would allow. And also, they continue to use the property. They have gas tanks on the property. They have fuel stations on the property. So it is, it's quite, you know, though it's being used very low-key at this time, you know, they have a permission for the special trade contractor uses from the ZBA. And, um, I think your concern with the report is that this is incrementally increasing the industrial uses of the property in a residential zone. So, um, but whether you feel that that rises to the level of needing more information, or do you feel that this is not going to be an environmental impact by the, uh, the expansion? Which is basically putting 2,000 more square feet of building on the property, which has extensive buildings on the property now.
I mean, always looking to the future. That whole property could be sold to someone else. So, you know, once that expansion is there, um, it becomes a totally different project.
Yeah.
So, um, are they tearing something down here or, or they're just adding, oh, they want to add on?
No, the 800 square feet, and let me just get exactly.
It's hard to.
But I think, um. They're demolishing.
It's 3,600 square feet. That's the existing storage.
The existing one is 840 square feet. That's the one they're demolishing and then putting up the 360.
And is that, okay, well, it's not jumping a lot line here, is it?
No. It is not.
What's behind it?
And it's going to meet the 50 feet, which is the buffer we'd have for a setback anyways in any zone, uh, from commercial to residential.
Right.
But it's whether you need more information or do you feel that this use, you know, um, that the, the environment's unpacks from this non, no sanitary system building is going to have an impact on the property, so.
And the Southampton development, it goes right behind it, right? You go in and.
It does. So this is the road and they do have a connection to the Summer Drive, which we thought was safer. You gave approval for that. But yes, this is residential to the south.
Right.
Summer, Seasons Lane, we should say. And then right up Summer, Summer Drive right there. Um, obviously, through the site plan process, you can control how that looks. You know, you can review that, make sure there's sufficient landscaping. They submitted, they had submitted some pictures too with landscaping and things like that.
So what is this being used for now? It's a warehouse?
Warehousing is the general term, but in this building itself, it can do special trade contractors, up to four special trade contractors.
In the main building?
In the main building.
And the warehouse is just warehousing? It's not?
Yeah.
Storage.
That's what they're asking for is warehouse.
So we want to assume lead agency?
Well, you, you, that would be step one. And step two, I'd recommend you do SEACRA at this point and see, um, poll the board and see if they think it's significant enough to either, or if you think it's negligible, you can issue a negative declaration today. Or if you need more information, we could ask for a long-form EAF. you can issue a negative declaration today, or if you need more information, we could ask for a long-form EAF. It's up to you.
It's unlisted action.
It's unlisted action. They've submitted the short form.
Yeah.
So they're, uh, square foot for a repair shop for ag use, so you think there's going to be storage of lawn mowers and, uh, garden, um...
Ag use.
They're not near it, are they?
It used to be. It used to be an ag use. That's what, it used to be an ag building.
Yeah, when we had agriculture.
When Southampton Meadows was, yeah.
Was a big field.
Is it graveyard?
Across, across, down the street is the Catholic Cemetery.
Do you see any need for the long form there? Have you identified anything?
No, I mean, it's, it's over, you know, even though it's an undesirable expansion, um, I, I did not see. I could see how you could, uh, issue an egg deck in this case.
That might be appropriate.
So it would be, really, I checked off four through 11. I thought those were negligible. It would be whether the level of number one on part two, excuse me, uh, the proposed action create a material conflict with adopted land use plan or zoning regulations. And then, given the size of the building, I could see you saying no in that case. But again, it's up to the board and what you're going to do with this.
Is there heavy traffic in and out of that onto, it's onto 27, right?
Yes, but with the entrance onto, um, Summer Drive.
Seasons Drive.
Yeah, uh, and that seasons, because that's to the south. There's no entrance onto the south. But on Summer Drive on the side, there is an entrance there.
That's Seasons on the drive.
Oh, oh, it's summer, you're right.
Summer, and then they get out? How? Through where, um...
And then they could come, they could go through the subdivision to, over to Bishop's, right?
Right.
Or they could go back onto County Route 39 and only take a rights.
Right turn only. They could actually get to North McGee Signal. I mean, if they leave the subdivision, they'd go around Bishop's and get to North.
Yeah, if they wanted to give east, or west.
If they wanted to go west.
I think that was always desirable for you to do that, to give, give those uses that, that ability to do that. So, yeah, traffic-wise, um, this, this use would be even used for the special trade contractor uses. It would be very low traffic generating, um, which is why I didn't track off transportation as being an issue here. So...
They're still making those left-hand turns.
No, they are. They're running that thing right over.
It's unbelievable.
Yeah, exactly. So, I, I could see recommending this as the small impact all, altogether. It's up to you, though. You know, if you want more information, I would, if you did want more information, I recommend kind of citing the information you'd want and then ask for the long form. Um, but it's up to you.
I think we're, I think...
Getting an indication that it's a negative declaration.
Negative declaration.
Okay.
Right. Does it generate more parking? A lot more parking?
No, it would not. It would be actually, uh, because it's 3,600 square feet, and there was 1,000 already, it would be three parking spaces being generated, so that would be...
Three.
Yeah, that would be very low. Okay?
Okay.
So I'm going to recommend, uh, negative, um, the, the resolution will be to assume lead agency and issue a negative declaration, and then pass that back to the ZB A. Okay?
Motion by Zuccarelli?
Second.
Second by Jackie. All in favor? Aye. Oppose abstentions? We have six yes.
Great, thank you.
Good. I wish you to adjourn.
Motion.
But Zuccarelli, second by Blaney. We will be back here at, uh...
Yeah.